Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. I note that the hour has come and that a quorum of this council is present. I will ask for all members to please take their seats. And I will ask for all sidebar conversations, please take them outside the chambers. And I will ask that all those who are present to please put your cell phones to silent and/or vibrate. Thank you. As we prepare to celebrate St. Patrick's Day, to give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Father Patrick Welsh, pastor of the St. Matthew Parish. He is here today as the guest of Councilmember Driscoll. I will ask all members and guests to please rise.
Brothers and sisters, let us listen to the word of God spoken to us through the prophet Cry out full-throated and unsparingly, lift up your voice like a trumpet blast. Is this the manner of fasting I wish or keeping a day of penance? To bow one's head like a reed and lie in sackcloth and ashes? Is this what you call a fast, a day acceptable to the Lord? Is this not rather the fast that I choose? Releasing those bound unjustly untieing the thongs of the yoke? Setting free the oppressed, breaking off every yoke? Is it not sharing your bread with the hungry, bringing the afflicted and the homeless into your house? Clothing the naked when you see them and not turning your back on your own? Then your light shall break forth like the dawn and your wounds shall quickly be healed. Your vindication shall go before you and the glory of the Lord shall be your rear guard. Then you shall call and the Lord will answer; you will cry for help and he will say, "Here am I." If you remove the yoke from among you, the accusing finger and malicious speech; if you lavish your food on the hungry and satisfy the afflicted; then light shall rise for you in the darkness and the gloom shall become for you like midday. Then the Lord will guide you always and satisfy your thirst in parched places, will give strength to your bones, and you shall be like a watered garden, like a flowing spring Having listened to God's word, we pray. And you, Lord our God, all things have their beginning, continuation, and end. Grace us with your saving presence; aid us with your constant help, and let us glorify you now and forever. Amen.
Amen. The chair thanks the pastor for his invocation. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March the 6th, 2025. The chair recognizes Deputy Whip, Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 6th, 2025 be approved.
It has been moved in propriety second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March the 6th of 2025 stand approved. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Majority Leader, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The chair thanks the councilmember. The chair recognizes Minority Leader, Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Good morning, Council President. On the behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leave's absence.
The chair thanks the councilmember. The chair now recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has been moved in propriety second that the legislative matters stated by Councilmember Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson be added to the agenda for today. Should those matters arise during the course of this session of council, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motions carried. The chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of City Council, I welcome you to our council session. We appreciate your time. We appreciate you taking time to join us as we attend to the legislative affairs of our great city. We certainly invite you to come again. Before I acknowledge some of the dignitaries who are here with us today, we have a special group of young men from Atlanta visiting City Council today that I want to publicly Oftentimes, when you turn on the television, you see images of young black men engaging in things that are not productive to our society, but these are young men who are in the right place at the right time, doing the right things for the right reasons, which I consider black excellence. The chair recognizes the hosts of the Young Men for Morehouse University, Councilmember Anthony, Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I want to say thank you, Council President. Thank you all for your words of encouragement as I just defended my dissertation, and so I want to say thank you all so much. I want to begin by saying that, and this is going to be really brief, because in 2008, 2009, I was a visiting student at Morehouse College, coming from Bates College in Maine. And it was at Morehouse I learned about excellence, whereas all the brothers there were striving to become lawyers, they were trying to become doctors and business people, and that inspired me to say, what can I do for myself to be excellent? And so I decided to go on the PhD journey. All these brothers are coming from Kentucky, Maryland, South, Southern areas, California, and they're on this thing called Get on the Bus Tour. And they're coming to talk to hundreds of men here in Philadelphia about leadership, excellence, and they're here to mentor them. This is what leadership is about. This is how we help our city of Philadelphia. And I want to shout out a student of mine that I've known for many years since Youth Action. He was one of my mentees, Jordan Phillips. He's the one who organized this program today, and I want to say thank you all so much, and we're looking forward to this. And also, one of our outstanding alums is here today, Senator Sharif Street from Morehouse College. But, so, this is the Get on Above Tour. What I would like for them to do, brothers lock arms left to right and do what y'all do. Let's go.
(Singing) Here oh Morehouse, here oh Morehouse, we have pledged our lives to thee. And we'll ever gain forever, give ourselves in loyalty. True forever, true forever, two oh Morehouse may we be. So to bind each, sun the other, and two ties more brotherly. Holy Spirit, Holy Spirit, make a steadfast on this truth. Two oh Morehouse and her ideals, and did all things that we do.
As we dispense with the regular order of business, as we continue the regular order of business, I want to acknowledge some elected officials who are here. Now, if you know me, I'm a stickler for time, and I start on time. So those who will come later on in the day will just have to wait to be acknowledged. First and foremost, I want to acknowledge my big brother, also my friend, State Senator Anthony Hardy Wims. Give him a round of applause. I want to acknowledge State Representative Andre Carroll. Give him a round of applause. The Chair of the Philadelphia delegation, who knows this body well, State Representative and Chairwoman Morgan Seifus. The Register of Wells, Mr. John Sabatina, Sr. A young lady who needs no introduction, the Honorable Janie L. Blackwell. Commissioner Omar Seber. Controller Kristi Brady. Sheriff Rochelle Bala. And State Senator Sharif Street. As there are no presentations today, the next order of business is communications. The chair requested the Sergeant-at-Arms deliver the messages from the mayor to the The chair recognizes Councilmember O'Neill.
I know he was on time, because I was on time and he was here. State Representative, new State Representative, Sean Doherty. And, thank you.
He was on time, because I did greet him early on, even though he's supposed to be over there, but I'll talk about that later on, but it's okay. Good to see you, Sean. He's a special guest of Councilmember Brian O'Neill. And I like that bipartisan-ship, so I like that. Oh, Rulandau, oh, okay, all right. Okay, the progressives working with the Northeast, I like that. Will the Chief Clerk read the messages from the mayor and any other communications in her possession? Chief Clerk.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on March 7th, 2025, I signed the following bills, which were passed by council at its session on March 6th, 2025. Bill Number 250071, 250072, and 250073. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a draft of a resolution entitled, Providing for the Approval by the Council of the City of Philadelphia of a Revised Five-Year Financial Plan for the City of Philadelphia Covering Fiscal Years 2026 through 2030 and Incorporating Revisions With Respect to Fiscal Year 2025, which is to be submitted by the mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority pursuant to an Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement by and between the city and the authority. And an ordinance to amend Chapter 19-4400, the Philadelphia Code entitled Development Impact Tax, to end imposition of the tax under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance amending Chapter 19-2600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Income and Receipts Taxes to revise tax rates and end certain exclusions from the tax on receipts, all under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance amending Section 19-1806 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Authorization of Realty Use and Occupancy Tax to Eliminate Certain Exemptions, all under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance amending Chapter 19-1500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage and Net Profits Tax by revising certain tax rates under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance amending Chapter 19-1800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled School Tax Authorization to Provide for an Increase in the Tax that the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia is authorized to impose on real estate, and amending Chapter 19-1300 entitled Real Estate Taxes to Establish an Equivalent Reduction in the Tax Rate for the City Real Estate Tax, all under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance amending Chapter 19-1400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Realty Transfer Tax by revising the rate of the tax, all under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance amending Section 10-1001 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fees of the Commissioner of Records to Increase the Portion of Fees for the Recording of Deeds and Mortgages and Related Documents to Be Used for Housing Trust Fund Purposes, under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance amending Chapter 12-1000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Traffic Code to revise the fee for the use of parking meters, all under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance to amend Bill Number 240182, approved June 14th, 2024, entitled An Ordinance to Adopt a Capital Program for the Six Fiscal Years, 2025 through 2030 inclusive, by revising various appropriation amounts and totals to conform to amendments to the FY 2025 Capital Budget Ordinance, all under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance to amend Bill Number 240181, approved June 14th, 2024, entitled An Ordinance to Adopt a Fiscal 2025 Capital Budget by revising various appropriation amounts and totals, all under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2025 from the General Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; the Water Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; and the Grants Revenue Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; to the General Fund, certain or all city departments, boards, and commissions; the Aviation Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; and the Transportation Fund, certain or all city departments, boards, and commissions. And an ordinance to adopt a Fiscal 2026 Capital Budget. And an ordinance to adopt a Capital Program for the Six Fiscal Years, 2026 through 2031 inclusive. And an ordinance adopting the Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2026. Council President, there are no further communications in my possession.
Thank you very much. The messages will be printed in the Journal. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions for introduction today, and good morning, everyone. God bless.
Good morning. The chair recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues, and good morning, all. Today I offer five bills on your behalf and one privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bills and resolution?
A Privileged Resolution Authorizing the Committee on Children and Youth to Hold Hearings on the Implementation of Bill Number 220654-A and the Success of Community Evening Resource Centers.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And an ordinance amending Chapter 19-1500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage and Net Profit Tax by revising certain taxes under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance providing for the approval by the council, I'm sorry, a resolution, a non-privileged resolution, providing for the approval by the Council of the City of Philadelphia of a Revised Five-Year Financial Plan for the City of Philadelphia Covering Fiscal Years 2026 through 2030 and incorporating revisions with respect to Fiscal Year 2025, which is to be submitted by the mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority pursuant to an Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement by and between the city and the authority.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in the next session of council.
And an ordinance adopting the Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2026.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance to adopt a Fiscal 2026 Capital Budget.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance to adopt a Capital Program for the Six Fiscal Years, 2026 through 2031 inclusive.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Jamie Gaultier.
Good morning, Council President. Today I have one privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A Privileged Resolution Honoring Officer Jesse Woodhouse for His Outstanding Service to the 16th Police District in West Philadelphia on the occasion of his retirement.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Majority Whip, Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the listening public. Today I have four bills on your behalf, Council President, and one privileged resolution on my own behalf. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bills and resolution?
A Privileged Resolution Honoring the Members of the Commonwealth Association of School Administrators as they have made significant contributions to their community advocating for the rights and interests of staff and students in the school district.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And an ordinance amending Chapter 19-2600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Income and Receipts Taxes to revise tax rates and end certain exclusions from the tax on receipts, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Chapter 12-1000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Traffic Code to revise the fee for the use of parking meters, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Chapter 19-1800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled School Tax Authorization to Provide for an Increase in the Tax that the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia is authorized to impose on real estate, and amending Chapter 19-1300 entitled Real Estate Taxes to Establish an Equivalent Reduction in the Tax Rate for the City Real Estate Tax, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 19-1806 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Authorization of Realty Use and Occupancy Tax to Eliminate Certain Exemptions, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee. The chair recognizes the gentleman from the Fourth Council, Mayor District Councilman Curtis Jones, Jr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer two privileged resolutions, one co-sponsored by yourself, both co-sponsored by yourself, Member Thomas and Member Young.
Thank you very much. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
A Privileged Resolution Honoring and Recognizing the Career of Tumore Alexander, a Dedicated Public Service on the Occasion of His Retirement from City Government.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a Privileged Resolution Honoring and Recognizing Trey Howard for his heroic response to the plane crash in northeast Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilman Rulandau. The chair recognizes Councilman Curtis Jones.
Did I fail to mention Member Driscoll, because he co-sponsored the second? All right, thank you. Please correct the record.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Councilman Rulandau.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and guests. Today I have one non-privileged and one privileged resolution that is especially co-sponsored by you.
Thank you very much. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of the privileged and non-privileged resolution?
A Privileged Resolution commemorating the 60th anniversary of the Civil Rights Marches across the Edmund Pettus Bridge in Selma, Alabama, to Montgomery on March 7th, 1965, also known as Bloody Sunday.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution condemning the Trump administration for its reprehensible actions to drastically defund the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, which will have a devastating effect on the enforcement of fair housing laws, damage communities, and escalate the affordable housing crisis.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in our next session of council. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. I offer one bill for introduction today.
Thank you very much. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bill?
An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of Ogden Street between North 13th Street and Comac Street, Wood Street between North Thirteenth Street and Comac Street, Wood Street between North Eighteenth Street and North Nineteenth Street, North Twenty First Street between Hamilton Street and Pennsylvania Avenue, Franklin Town Boulevard between Calhoun Hill Street and Wood Street.
Counsel be at ease. This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Minority Leader, Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution to introduce today.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A Privileged Resolution Recognizing March twentieth, twenty twenty five, as Children First Day in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes the leader of the Kennetson Caucus, Councilman Katsy Lazzada.
Now that you forgot me, right? Bienvenidos, everyone. Good morning, Council President. I don't have any bills or resolutions today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for remembering me.
Thank you. Thank you, Leader Lazzada. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Thank you, Council President. I have nada today, my brother.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Minority Whip, Councilmember Nicholas Nick O'Rourke.
Good morning, Mr. President. I have nothing to introduce today.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Morning, Mr. President, and happy Irish Heritage Month here in Philadelphia. I have no bills or resolutions to be introduced today.
Thank you very much, and thank you for my gift. I will make sure they're put to good use later on today. Irish potatoes, cookies, so y'all know.
And by the way, my wife Franny made them.
Look forward every year. The Chair recognizes the gentleman from South Philadelphia, Chairman of Appropriations, Councilmember Mark Squilla.
I don't know if we want to skip Councilmember.
Councilmember Mark Squilla.
Yes, thank you, man. Thank you, Mr. President. I offer three bills on your behalf and, and three additional bills for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bills?
An ordinance to amend Bill Number two four zero one eight two, approved June fourteenth, twenty twenty four, entitled An Ordinance to Adopt a Capital Program for the Six Fiscal Years, twenty twenty five through twenty thirty inclusive, by revising various appropriation amounts and totals to conform to amendments to the FY twenty twenty five Capital Budget Ordinance, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance to amend Bill Number two four zero one eight one, approved June fourteenth, twenty twenty four, entitled An Ordinance to Adopt a Fiscal Twenty Twenty Five Capital Budget by revising various appropriation amounts and totals, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will refer to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty five from the General Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; the Water Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; and the Grants Revenue Fund, certain or all city departments, boards, and commissions; to the General Fund, certain or all city departments, boards, and commissions; the Aviation Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; and the Transportation Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions.
This bill refers to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Federal Street, Thirteenth Street, Warton Street, and Broad Street.
This bill refers to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Section twelve dash one 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 seven of the Philadelphia Code entitled Physically Handicapped and Disabled or Severely Disabled Veteran Parking, as it will take effect pursuant to Bill Number two four zero six one three A A, approved December eighteenth, twenty twenty four, by revising the definition of disability parking space and further amending the Philadelphia Code by updating cross-reference, references to Section twelve dash eleven seventeen that now appear in Title nineteen, entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions, and Title twelve, Traffic Code, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will refer to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Title twelve of the Philadelphia Code entitled Traffic Code to clarify penalties and procedures associated with smart loading, zoning, zone parking enforcement under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will refer to the appropriate committee. The Chair now recognizes the gentleman from the Tenth Councilmatic District from the Northeast Philadelphia, my good friend, Councilmember Brian O'Neill.
And since we're a tripartisan council, and I have my, and since I have my bright green tie on, I thought I'd be hard to skip today. But I, Council President, good morning. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you very much. Tripartisan. It's a good one. The Chair recognizes Deputy Whip, Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer three bills today.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bills?
An ordinance amending Section ten dash one thousand one of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fees of Commissioner of Records to Increase the Portion of Fees for the Recording of Deeds and Mortgages and Related Documents to be Used for Housing Trust Fund Purposes, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will refer to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Chapter nineteen dash fourteen hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Realty Transfer Tax by revising the rate of the tax, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
To amend Chapter nineteen dash forty four hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Development Impact Tax to End Imposition of the Tax under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will refer to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning to all colleagues and guests. Today I have one bill.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance amending Section nine dash six three three of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sale of Electronic Smoking Devices and Unapproved Nicotine Delivery Products to Update Definitions and to Provide for Additional Penalties, Enforcement, and Compliance Options, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The next order of business is reports from committee. The Chair recognizes the gentleman from the Fifth Councilmatic District, Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young, for a report from the Committee on Streets and Services.
Good morning, Mr. President. Again, the Committee on Streets and Services reports out three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the report?
The Committee on Streets and Services, to which were referred the following bills: Bill Number two five zero one hundred, An Ordnance Authorizing Encroachments in the Nature of a Sidewalk Cafe in the vicinity of one seven seven Markle Street, Philadelphia, PA one nine one two seven, under certain terms and conditions, respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. And Bill Number two five zero zero six six, An Ordnance Amending Chapter eleven dash two hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Openings and Excavations in the Streets to Impose Additional Penalties on Violators of Underground Permitting Requirements, under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number two four zero one four seven, An Ordnance Authorizing Philippian Baptist Church or a Subsequent Owner to Install, Own, and Maintain an Encroachment at fifty-eight oh one North Broad Street, Philadelphia, PA one nine one four one, under certain terms and conditions, respectfully reports it has considered and amended the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee on Streets and Services, Council President.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill is read today. Would the, would the council be suspended to permit first reading of the bill is read today, and to the record by the Chief Clerk?
It has been moved in property, second, that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit the consideration of these bills just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from the committees with the suspension of rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendar for the next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers two five zero one eight three and two four zero four two seven dash A. The following bills and resolutions on the calendar are being held. Two five zero one six eight and two four zero six six five. Two four zero four two seven dash A is being amended, and two four zero three zero four dash A is being placed on the suspension calendar.
Thank you. Before considering these bills and resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's session of council. Once you have signed up, you will be called in an order in which your name appears on the signup sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commenters each will have three minutes to speak. However, this time, limit may vary from session to session. Due to today's agenda, the time limit will be one minute. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the one-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium. When there are thirty seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once one minute has passed, the light will turn red, and the Sergeant-at-Arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not already done so. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on the same subject matter. I will now ask the Chief Clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
Major Jeremy Blattstein, Kate Perez, Peter McDermott, Vanita Samuel, and David Pickett make their way to the podium. Jeremy Blattstein, Kate Perez, Peter McDermott, Vanita Samuel, and David Pickett.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Jeremy Blattstein. I'm here to talk about the bill related to the Department of Education. The Department of Education has been crucial to ensure the safety of all students in both Philadelphia School District and on the campuses of universities. Speaking of safety, unfortunately, this week, a speed camera bill was held up because some members of this council said that they weren't aware of it. I know that a closed-door meeting was held on October twenty four, first, twenty twenty four, where it was explained to City Council where these speed cameras were going. So to then claim that you didn't know about these cameras is disingenuous, and is something that needs to be brought to the attention of everybody. So we're talking about safety. The last thing we're talking about is this rumor that I heard about City Council disbanding the Philadelphia Sheriff's Office. I'm not sure if it's true or not, but let's put it on the ballot. And last thing is, raise your hand, because we're talking about SEPTA. Raise your hand if you rode SEPTA in the last week. Each week, I challenge City Council to ride SEPTA once a week, see the issues that your constituents are facing. And each week, no hands. So ride the ride to City Hall, and let's grow Philly to two milli. Thank you.
You have one minute, state your name for the record, please.
Kate Perez, our government has threatened funding cuts to universities that don't scale back on equal protections for all students and cut EDI policies. Our government is revoking funds at will, like stopping four hundred million to Columbia University, using antisemitism to silence anyone speaking up against an apartheid occupation but staying silent against university Nazi rallies. The president is online bragging about using ICE to kidnap Mahmoud Khalil from his New York home to a Louisiana detention center a thousand miles away with no warrant on no charges, attempting to deport a green card holder based on First Amendment-protected activity without due process is, is an unconstitutional and authoritarian tactic to disappear dissenters and smother free speech. Schools have a duty to protect students from political persecution, and I urge us to issue robust policies refusing cooperation with ICE, preparing to refuse subpoenas, and preemptively deleting student files regarding activism. On the city budget, just cutting the budget for vacant police roles could free around two hundred million dollars for the city, and the fifty-six million that the state is spending on genocidal war bonds could completely replace our idea of funding for special needs education in Philly. They're gutting higher education. We need to enact sanctuary policies, commit to protecting freedom of speech, stop letting weapons supporting genocide leave our ports, and meet the needs of our people before buying more drones for the cops. Free Palestine.
We have Peter McDermott, Vanita Samuel, then David Pickett. May Paul Brown, Lynn Landis, and Ernest Wiley also make their way to the podium.
Vanita Samuel, good morning, Council. I would like to explain that we have a good officer, Jesse Woodhouse, who has been in the Sixteenth District for eight years as our Community Relations Officer, and we would also like to wish him well on his retirement.
Good morning, Council President, and esteemed members of the council. I will be brief. I want to thank Mike Driscoll for introducing two five zero one six eight, Resolution Honoring Father Judge High School Boys Basketball Team for winning the twenty twenty five Philadelphia Catholic League Championship and celebrating their remarkable achievement. It was twenty-seven years since they won the last title. Twenty-seven is a number that's near and dear to Father Judge alumni like myself. They have proceeded to move through the state and are mowing down more opponents, so good luck to Father Judge, and thank you, Mike Driscoll.
Thank you.
David Pickett, good morning, Council President. Good morning, Councilmembers. I'm honored to stand here today to talk about Officer Jesse Woodhouse. I've had the privilege of working with him for a number, for a number of years, and I watch how giving he is to the community. He cares about the community he works in. I see him take out of his own pocket to help fund activities within the community. He's a wonderful addition to the team, and I just love to honor him and, and thank him for all the work that he's done.
Captain Paul Brown of Philadelphia Police Department. I'd just like to thank Councilmember Gaultier and other members of council for taking the time out to recognize Officer Jesse Woodhouse on his dedication and commitment to the Philadelphia, City of Philadelphia and its community. I'd also like to take the time out to thank Officer Woodhouse for allowing me to share in his efforts to bridge the gap and bring neighbors, community stakeholders, and police together to help improve the quality of life within the confines of the Sixteenth District. Jesse, may success follow you to your next endeavor. Thank you, sir.
We have Lynn Landis, Ernest Wiley, Ying Zhang Lin, Yang Wu Liu, and Baodie Jen. Can you also make your way to the podium?
Good morning. I'm Lynn Landis at safestreetsphilly.com. I support the resolution to restrict mobile service providers to certain locations in the Seventh District, which includes Kensington. These providers service those in need, and particularly the drug-addicted and mentally ill homeless community. They also have created a real nuisance for many neighborhoods, including Center City, every weekend at Logan Circle in front of the Central Library. Those in need should be serviced in an organized and civil manner at a city agency and not lined up on the sidewalk to be made a public, public spectacle of. The city should do the right thing and get the mentally ill homeless and drug-addicted off the street and into mandatory, mandatory treatment in secure facilities. It's common sense and the compassionate solution.
Good morning. My name is Ernest Wiley. I am a first responder responding to the current economic crisis and multi-crisis situations. I am placing all elected officials and the Sergeant-at-Arms at this City Hall unnoticed. I'll be carrying out a rescue operation at this meeting. I'll be teaching everyone in the country how to neutralize the Trump's tariff manipulation. It will make the budget management process easier for all elected officials. Placing limits on my time will be considered obstructing a first responder from rescue operations. A criminal complaint will be filed against all politicians in this room. Obstructing my rescue operations will entangle all elected officials and the Sergeant-at-Arms with manslaughter criminal complaints and attempted manslaughter criminal complaints in the event my time limitations are applied to this report. It's similar to obstructing a first responder or a doctor while actively performing CPR on a patient. At this time, I am requesting that the clerk resets my time, and my official time will begin now as we continue. The following report is less than four minutes.
Next speaker, please.
Ying Zhang Lin, Yang Wu Liu, Baodie Jen, Makelsa Leon, David A. Jenkins, and Muti Ajumu Azoboro also make their way to the podium.
Thank you. My name is Ying Zhang Lin from Chinese community. I'm here today to, I wanted to say thank you for the, to the Community Relations Officer Jesse Woodhouse. He is really, really good. He did a good job. He bring us to the community, and we organize so many activities, and for Chinese community, we really enjoying to work to the society together. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, City Council Members. My name is Kelsey Leone. I'm a harm reductionist. I'm here again to mourn the life of a community member and drug user who died in prison custody. His name was Andrew Drury, and his death was cruel, predictable, and preventable. Andrew's family described him as warm and a generous person, a good listener and a helping hand. "I feel that something is not right," a family member said, "and I won't know until I can get the coroner's report. I'm in the dark right now." My heart breaks for Andrew Drury's family the same way it broke for Joey Gabor's family and Amanda Cahills when they also described being left in the dark about their loved one's death, desperately seeking answers and being utterly stonewalled. The Cahills waited six months for Amanda's death certificate, only for the coroner to say she died of a fentanyl overdose. Overdoses happen in minutes, but we know Amanda screamed for help for hours. These facts don't add up. The Gabor's had to send Joey's body to another state in order to get a second opinion on the cause of his death before they could lay him to rest. How many more families will be forced to grieve unnatural deaths which plunge them into the morbid details of bureaucracy and logistics? The city government knows that the prisons and jails are woefully understaffed, that inmates across the board are not going, are not getting adequate medical care. In fact, there was a twenty-five million dollar judgment against the city to direct funds to improve prison conditions. Yet the mayor's budget contains funding to expand the so-called wellness court from one to five days a week. You should not need to be a perfect person in order to access your rights. At present, the city cannot guarantee that imprisoning people who use drugs won't be a death sentence. Mayor Parker, City Council, how many more drug users need to die before you drop your carceral approaches? Again, I say, let Andrew Drury's memory be a blessing to his family and to all who knew him. Let it be a reminder of our fundamental rights to bodily autonomy and compassionate medical treatment, and that even in our lowest moments, we can still know love, laughter, and community.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
We have Yang Wu Liu, Baodie Chen, David A Jenkins, and Muti Ajummu Azaboro.
Deputy Alexander Jenkins. Mr. President, members of the body and special guests of the chamber, I rise today in staunch support of the Councilmember Thomas's resolution as our children's future is under attack. The reckless attempt to dismantle the U.S. Department of Education and slash federal funding for public schools isn't just some distant policy debate in Washington, D.C. No, it is a direct assault on the students, teachers, and families of America and of our great city. Put-offish public schools rely on hundreds of millions of federal funding, funding which pays for special education, career training, school meals, vital programs that help level the playing field for our low-income students, and sadly, these cuts do not affect the politicians who cavalierly dismantle the hopes and dreams that education affords. No, it is our children and our teachers and our communities, brothers and sisters of love, one hundred and seventy-eight million, fifty-six million, seven million, eighty-six million, these are the numbers. These are not just numbers and confessions. These are truths represented by the faces of our children, our future workers, the very heart of our city, and we will not stand for it. As I gaze upon you all who sit here today in blue clad, who protect the, administrate the law, the elected, those who choose to represent the multitudes, those whom stand up on the very educations that these actions would strip from the futures, I am reminded by the great words of Sir Thomas More. "If you suffer your people to be ill-educated and then strip them of their manners which corrupts them from infancy and then charge them for the education that is missing, you have done nothing but create a thief only then to punish it." I am solidifying the knowledge that although it may not be apparent to the world today, we are not in the business in America of creating thieves. We stand with our teachers. We stand with our students. We stand for the future where every child, no matter their zip code, their socioeconomic stance, their inefficiencies, has a chance to learn and thrive and succeed. So let Washington come if they dare, knowing that we here in Philadelphia will stand up.
Muti Ajummu Azaboro, Obona Hagens, also make their way to the podium.
General Muti Ajummu Saburu. General is my title. Muti Ajummu Saburu is my name. I'm from the great state of North Philadelphia, city of Richard Allen, and we try to represent as best we could. The ordinance that we come to talk about is one in which we talked about before. However, we have new knowledge and new information requires us to be much more alert as to the need to be against this particular ordinance, and we're against it. It's ordinance two-four-oh-three-oh-four-A, and dealing with specificity, the building, construction, and occupancy code. Like we said before, the language is vague, therefore folks can't understand the language, and so we need to resist this. We have new knowledge out of the district attorney's office that Philadelphia now is the number one city with the decrease in homicides. So therefore, after safety and security comes prosperity, and part of prosperity is the housing issue. We can't actually know how, what's going on in our city with housing if we don't know the language in which we use to make the ordinances. So we ask all legislators to use language that we can understand and stop being so coded and cryptic in these languages. Thank you very much.
Obona Hagens, fourth-generation chattel slavery survivor. One minute is just not enough for me to get through everything, but I just want to try to get to the gist of it. The Education, the Department of Education slashing of the funding. The Department of Education has failed the American freedmen youth over the past forty, fifty years. When I graduated from high school, couldn't read, write, or do math on a high school level. You couldn't believe it, right, the way I speak, right? But, you know, it's something that's happening, you guys are dealing with called the Power Act. I just want to remind you that it's possible that the Department of Government Efficiency may come here to check y'all out, because it's something that's not quite right with that Power Act. So I would suggest that, you know, if y'all don't want to be in handcuffs, that you relook, take another look at that Power Act, because it's absolutely unconstitutional. Obona Hagens, unseated Council President, over and out.
Council President, there are no further names for public comment.
That concludes public comment. We will now consider the bills and resolutions. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on a second reading and final passage calendar. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution number two-five-zero-one-eight-three?
A resolution opposing any attempts to dismantle the U.S. Department of Education or slash federal funding for public school programs that support low-income students and students with disabilities.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Majority Whip Isaiah Thomas for a motion regarding Resolution number two-five-zero-one-eight-three.
Thank you, Council President. I tried to get the name of the witness who testified, because I don't think I could say it any better myself. So I appreciate the remarks on public comment around this specific resolution. Education is one of the most pressing issues we have. So with that being said, Council President, I enthusiastically move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the Resolution number two-five-zero-one-eight-three be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted.
Council President, just respectfully, I just want to...
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say his name, David.
Thank you for your comments today.
Very much appreciate it. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. The clerk, but please read the title of Bill number two-four-zero-three-zero-four-a.
An ordinance amending Subcode A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code of Title Four of the Philadelphia Code, the Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code to require proof of certain insurance certificates, all under certain terms and conditions.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young for a motion on this bill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Bill number two-four-zero-three-zero-four-A be placed on a suspension calendar.
It has been moved in property second that Bill number two-four-zero-three-zero-four-a be placed on a suspension calendar. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Will the clerk please read the title of Bill number two-four-zero-four-two-seven-a.
An ordinance amending Section fourteen-three-oh-five of the Philadelphia Code entitled Nonconformities by providing further provisions on changes from nonconforming uses, all under certain terms and conditions.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill number two-four-zero-four-two-seven-a. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of Council. I move for their adoption of the amendment.
It has been moved in property second that amendment to Bill number two-four-zero-four-two-seven-a be adopted. All in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the bill has been amended. This bill will be placed on a final passage calendar for our next session of council. Will the clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Children and Youth to hold hearings on the implementation of Bill number two-two-zero-six-five-four-a and the success of community evening resource centers introduced by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
The chair recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring Officer Jesse Woodhouse for his outstanding service to the Sixteenth Police District in West Philadelphia on the occasion of his retirement, introduced by Councilmember Gaultier.
Member Gaultier, is Officer Woodhouse here?
Yes.
Officer Woodhouse, could you please come to the front of the entrance, please? The chair recognizes the General Lady from the Third Councilmatic District, Councilwoman Jamie Gaultier, for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. Congratulations, and thank you, Officer Woodhouse, for everything that you have given to our community. You not only keep us safe, you engage with us and support young people, and you lead fitness classes that are so rigorous that I'm scared to join them, but I appreciate them. And with that, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the members of Commonwealth Association of School Administrators as they have made significant contributions to their community, advocating for the rights and interests of staff and students in the school district, introduced by Councilmember
The chair recognizes Majority Whip, Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the chief clerk please read the next title of her resolution?
A resolution honoring and recognizing the career of Tamar Alexander, a dedicated public servant on the occasion of his retirement from city government, introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion on the resolution.
In the spirit of public service, in the spirit of for administrations, in the spirit of making government work, I move for the adoption.
It has a move in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Y'all stood up. I don't know where you at, but I'm gonna go with the flow. Will the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Trey Howard for his heroic response to the plane crash in northeast Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion on the resolution.
In conjunction with Member Driscoll and true heroism, I move for the adoption.
It has a move in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the chief clerk? Will the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution commemorating the sixtieth anniversary of the civil rights marches across the Edmund Pettus Bridge in Selma, Alabama, to Montgomery on March seventh, nineteen sixty-five, also known as Bloody Sunday, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The chair recognizes Councilman Rue Landau for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. In conjunction with you, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing March twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, as Children First Day in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Is there a second? It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
Council President, there are no further resolutions in my possession.
So at this time, I want to take a moment to acknowledge other elected officials who are here, as well as former members of this body. So I'm going to start with the Honorable Brian Dell Reynolds Brown. Let's give our round of applause. Also acknowledge State Representative Anthony Bellman. Give him a round of applause. State Representative Jason Dawkins. State Senator Nikhil Saval. Nikhil is also the minority leader in the Senate for the Philadelphia delegation, correct? Also want to acknowledge Commissioner Lisa Dealey. Minority Appropriations Chairman, State Senator, my good friend Vincent Hughes. Give him a round of applause. Hollywood, right there. Y'all know you're from South Philly for real, but it's a different story. Good to see you. Attorney General Dave Sunday, let's give him a round of applause. From that great part of Philadelphia known as South Philly, specifically Seventeenth and Dickerson, the Majority Appropriations Chairman of the House of Representatives, some call him moneybags, I call him little bro, Appropriations Chairman Jordan Harris. As our calendar is officially completed, the time has come for us to consider the mayor's presentation of our annual budget address. Mayor's presentation of our annual budget address. The Philadelphia Home Ruder Charter states that the Mayor shall submit to council no later than ninety days before the end of the fiscal year, her operating budget message and proposed operating budget ordinance for the ensuing fiscal year. At the same time, the Mayor shall submit to council the recommended capital program and capital budget as received from the City Planning Commission to the extent approved by the Mayor. I now appoint the following committee to escort the Mayor into the council chambers. Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson, Majority Whip Councilmember Isaiah Thomas, Majority Deputy Whip Councilmember Cindy Bass, and Minority Leader Councilmember Kendra Brooks. Please escort the Mayor to the podium. Give a shout out to Mrs. Johnson I see over there. Hey, babe.
Council President, the Mayor has arrived.
Let me start by saying good morning to my friend. Please be seated. Please be seated. Please be seated.
Excuse me. Counselor Baines, one second, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'm, you know...
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen. She read it. Ladies and gentlemen, I am pleased to introduce the first woman, the one hundredth Mayor of the City of Philadelphia, Mayor Sherrell L. Parker. The floor is yours, Madam Mayor.
That's all right now, Mr. President. Good morning to my friend, Council President Kenyatta Johnson, to council's leadership team, Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson, Majority Whip Isaiah Thomas, Deputy Majority Whip Cindy Bass, Minority Leader Kendra Brooks, Minority Whip Nicholas O'Rourke, and every member of city council. To members of the Philadelphia delegation and all statewide leaders here with us today, AG Sunday, we are super excited about your presence. Thank you so very much, sir, for being here. To our faith leaders, men and women of organized labor, community leaders, the business and philanthropic community, members of my cabinet and our city workers, and to everyone watching online, listening on Word, and tuning in on TV, good morning and thank you for welcoming back home into the chambers of the Philadelphia City Council. Before I begin telling my story, I need to say a special thank you to two people in particular who are the foundation on which I stand. I want to say a special thank you to my twelve-year-old son, Langston Mullins, and to my former husband and parenting partner Benjamin Mullins. He's here somewhere, somewhere today. Okay, I see you. Langston and Ben, I love you both very much, and I couldn't do this job without you. Please give them a round of applause. Last year, I told the story about how my journey to public service began in this chamber. I gave a Black History Month speech here as a seventeen-year-old high school student. I later came here to work, and I learned from giants, my mentors, councilmembers Marion Tasco and Gussie Clark. Yes. With role models like Anna Wernher, Joan Krajewski, and Janie Blackwell. These leaders taught me many things, but none more important than this. If you show up and do the work every day for the people of Philadelphia, good things will follow. I am proud to return today as the one hundredth Mayor of our great city of Philadelphia, having submitted my proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget, five-year plan, and recommended capital budget and program to city council for its consideration. Last year, I called it One Philly Budget. That was the title of the budget. It was how we would fund my promise to the people of Philadelphia for a safer, cleaner, and greener city with access to economic opportunity for all. With the collaboration and hard work of this council, we delivered on that promise by approving a six-point-three-seven-billion-dollar budget that invested in a city government that people can see, touch, and feel. This year, Mr. President, I am calling it the One Philly Two Point Oh Budget, the new and improved version. It's a six-point-seven billion-dollar budget brimming with vital investments for Philadelphians. However, before I dive into the details, I need to share a story about something that happened six weeks ago in our city. On January thirty-first, an unimaginable black swine event struck our city. An airplane crashed near the Roosevelt Mall in northeast Philadelphia. Seven people tragically lost their lives. Two more remain hospitalized with severe burns, including a young boy, whose father perished that night. By now, Philadelphia, you know that your mayor is a praying mayor. And so I ask that you pray for all of the victims of this tragedy. And I'm gonna ask everyone in attendance to please stand with me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Our emergency responders, Philadelphia police and fire and other city workers responded immediately to the crash, and they have continued working every day since to help the people of northeast Philadelphia recover. Our mayor's business action team met with dozens of businesses impacted by the crash. Our neighborhood and community engagement team knocked on every door in the neighborhood to let people know where to find help. Our licenses and inspections team inspected every impacted home for structural issues. And we are providing trauma and behavioral health care to those who need it. People know that they can call nine-eight-eight, and our support staff will help you get through this tough time. Councilmembers Driscoll and O'Neal, northeast Philadelphia is resilient and strong like our city, and we will not rest until we have provided every support available for our residents and businesses. I'm gonna ask the following individuals to please stand. Police Commissioner Kevin Bethel, Fire Commissioner Jeff Thompson, Managing Director Adam Teal, Emergency Management Director Dominic Morelles, Director Alba Martinez and Celine Wilson from our Commerce Department, Ellenai Commissioner Basil Miranda, and Hassan Freeman from our Neighborhood and Community Engagement Team. Every city employee who has served residents at the crash site, if you're here right now, stand. Let us now honor every city worker who has worked at the crash site or in the surrounding community. Thank you. Thank you. Now, before I address the challenges in front of us in fiscal year twenty twenty-six, I need to highlight some of the challenges we took on in the current year, FY twenty twenty-five, and look at how we did so far. In other words, don't just listen to what I say, watch what I do, or in this case, what we have done. We fact-checked what we do in the Parker administration and what we promised to the people of Philadelphia. So I want you to know that we cross-checked every promise that I made in last year's budget, thirty-three promises to be precise. And in the flyer that we're handing out today, we're letting you know exactly how we did so far. We do not promise perfection, and we are doing the best we can with what we have, and I want you to take a look. On public safety, I said it last year, that I felt a sense of urgency, and that we be laser-focused and unapologetic about improving public safety. How did we do? Homicides are down thirty-seven percent. Shootings are down thirty-six percent. And we have two hundred police officers doing community policing in our neighborhoods. I promised it, and it's working. One of those new community policing officers is here with us today. Police Officer Anastasia Briscoe, who joined the police department last fall, is now walking a footbeat in the First District in South Philadelphia around Broad and Snyder, and she's getting to know the people that we are sworn. Thank you, thank you so very much for your support and service and for being there, not only when people call nine-one-one, but proactively. I want you to know that our officers are working hard and helping to make our city safer. It's not just policing, though. Our mantra is prevention, intervention, and enforcement. PIE, led by Chief Public Safety Director Adam Gier and Police Commissioner Kevin Bethel, we practice it every day. Anti-violence, we awarded nineteen million dollars to anti-violence community-based organizations that know their neighborhoods best in twenty twenty-four, and another twenty-four million so far this year. It's making a difference. Youth sports, we're funding youth sports because that is how we will help to give our children a positive path. Our kids shouldn't have to stand on street corners with helmets and drums to raise money. Their city should support them, and we are. Three-point-two million dollars in the, in the current budget. Two special people are here today, and I want them to stand. Amir Fisher is a football player, and his coach, Donald Richardson, from the Blackhawks Athletic Club in North Philly are here. Please stand. Where are they? Hey, Coach. Thank you so very much, Co- Coach. We appreciate you, appreciate you, and we are happy, happy that you are here. Now, we're gonna turn to something that's extremely important, and that's clean and green. I promised a new office an approach to tackle quality of life issues and banish that filth of Philadelphia moniker once and for all. So how we do? We cleaned over sixty-seven thousand city streets and neighborhood quarters, sixty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-seven to be precise. We towed eleven thousand six hundred and seventeen abandoned cars and vehicles. Thank you to the Philadelphia Police Department, Parking Authority, and Clean and Green. We also cleaned seventeen thousand three hundred and nineteen vacant lots. Thank you, CLIP, and thank you, PA Horticultural Society. This is intergovernmental collaboration at its best, and we are proud. The next issue that I'm going to talk with you about is one that you all know is near and dear to my heart. That's P H L T C B. We promised we fund P H L Taking Care of Business, a community-based cleaning program that creates economic opportunity at the same time. How we do? T C B employs three hundred and twenty-four workers, and we're supporting thirty-nine community-based organizations that are cleaning up one hundred and fifty-five commercial quarters. By the end of March, T C B will add new organizations and more workers to clean thirty-nine more areas across Philadelphia. Now, we'll turn to education. We promised that we would invest in year-round schooling to give our children the same opportunities as children in the suburbs. And guess what? We now want to measure how we did in this effort. We opened twenty-five extended-day and extended-year pre- and after-school programs, traditional public and charter schools, offering over seven thousand new slots for educational enrichment, and that's progress. That is progress. We increased the portion of the real estate tax going to school districts to provide an additional one hundred and twenty-five million dollars over five years. We also added a hundred and twenty-five million over five years for schools going through our property revaluation process. These added funding streams for schools are in addition to the two hundred and eighty-million-dollar contribution that we make each year to the school district through the budget process. Now, I want you all to do the math. I want you to do the math, and this is important, especially for our state leaders who are present. I think Chairmans Hughes and Harris are here. That's more than one-point-four-billion dollars in contributions over the next five years, in addition to the two hundred and fifty-million dollars in new support. We see and hear you, Dr. Wildington, and folks, this is just a snapshot of what we've been able to get accomplished. You can clap for that. That's important. Thank you. I also want to note that we are never satisfied in this administration, and know that we have a lot more work to do. But we made progress, and in our first year, and city council has been a full partner in that progress, Mr. President. We actually did a whole lot more, but we want to get to this budget and our plans for FY twenty twenty-six. But quickly, before we do that, know that you can go to our brand-new data-tracking website, PhillyStat360, and look at the wide range of city programs and see for yourself how we're doing. Councilmember Landau, you know like I do that solid data and transparency are essential for making good decisions in everything that we do. Philadelphia, if you haven't gotten a close-up look, go to our new PhillyStat360 dashboard and see it for yourself. Kristin Bray and Melissa Scott, I see you both. And let me say one more thing before we dive into fiscal year twenty twenty-six and my proposed budget. And this, this is important, that I, as mayor, share this with the city. I know there is uncertainty in the air right now. People don't know what to expect from their government, and uncertainty can breed fear. I want the people of Philadelphia and our city employees to hear me. Your city is here to keep you safe and to safeguard your basic rights. Our diversity is what makes us One Philly, a united city, and we will never compromise that. Let us start with the state of the city's fiscal health. The state of the city's fiscal health remains strong. We continue to make contributions to the Budget Stabilization Reserve Fund. It will have $280 million by the end of the proposed five-year plan. That fund will be especially important as we face economic and federal policy uncertainties moving forward. I want to thank you, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson, for your strong leadership on this issue. The trajectory of the city's pension fund continues to move in the right direction. We've now reached a 65% funding level, the highest in decades. That's an increase of more than 20 percentage points in just eight years. And it's due to reach 80% in FY '29 and 100% by FY '33. That was a key factor, you know, that led S&amp;P Global Ratings to upgrade the city of Philadelphia to its highest combined credit rating in decades. Finance Director Rob Duboe, Budget Director Sabrina Maynard, City Treasurer Jackie Dunn, Deputy City Treasurer Matt Bowman, and all of the dedicated finance employees, take a bow and thank you so very much for your service. I also want to thank the members and staff of the Pension Board, our municipal unions, City Council, and our Philadelphia delegation to the General Assembly. Everyone has played a role in the stabilization of our pension fund, a development with enormous fiscal consequences for our city. We all know that higher credit ratings are a key factor in determining the interest rate the city pays when we borrow money. Lower interest rates mean we pay less to borrow and can invest more in city services for our residents. But our discipline with the pension fund does even more. Once these obligations to our workers are fully funded, our annual general fund cost will drop more than $430 million. That's real money we can use for our biggest priorities. We will face fiscal challenges ahead, and as you'll remember from last year, and this is always important for me to get on the record, I noted that the city borrowed $1.3 billion in the 1990s to shore up our pension fund. And guess what? We're still paying for it today. From now through FY '29, we'll pay $1 billion in debt service, including an $80 million balloon payment in FY '29. But no worries, we'll meet our obligations as we always do. I will not allow anything to compromise our fiscal stability. Now, let's turn to FY '26 and see what's in this budget for Philadelphians. We are continuing to make big and bold investments in our city and our residents, just as we did in our first year. Let's start with public safety, my number-one priority as your mayor. As I said earlier, our model of PIE, Prevention, Intervention, and Enforcement, is the baseline for all of our public safety efforts. We cannot police our way out of the problems associated with gun violence or open-air drug markets anywhere in our city. We can't. Police alone won't do it. It is our comprehensive public safety strategy that is making a difference. Councilmember O'Rourke, we all know that. A comprehensive strategy is essential. And our PIE strategy, it is beginning to show results. Under Chief Public Safety Director Adam Gier, many action steps are underway, and we are making further investments in public safety in FY '26. Neighborhood Wellness Court. We opened the Neighborhood Wellness Court as a pilot in January in Kensington. I want to thank, wholeheartedly thank, the First Judicial District for working with the Parker administration on this innovation. The Wellness Court offers fast-track diversion for people arrested for drug-related offenses. In FY '26, we will expand Neighborhood Wellness Court to a five-days-a-week pilot, a $2.7 million investment in wellness that will be well-spent. In addition, thank you. In addition to a judicial hearing and warrant clearance, defendants can receive same-day medical and behavioral health assessments, treatment intake, and other services, all in one setting. This innovative new program, it complements our existing Police-Assisted Diversion, or PAD, which provided pre-booked diversion for drug-related offenses in over 1,000 cases already last year. We will also expand Police-Assisted Diversion in FY '26 as a pilot with a $2.8 million investment. Both of these public safety investments are designed to get more individuals suffering from a multitude of ailments off the streets and connected to the treatment services that they deserve. Public safety is not just about programs, it is about real Philadelphians. With this in mind, I'm proud that one of them is here with us today, Allen Burrell. Allen was shot 10 times. He was referred to our Group Violence Intervention Initiative by a family member. His aunt believed that GVI could help Allen. He has engaged actively with our GVI program and dedicated himself to making a change. He enrolled in workforce development programs, and today, he is working full-time with the city of Philadelphia. Allen, please stand and be recognized. We appreciate you and your journey. You are why we do this work, Allen. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Allen. It wasn't 10 times, it was 25 times. These are just some, and he's still standing. Give that a round of applause. These are just some of the many prevention and intervention-based programs that our Office of Public Safety is leading on every day. I want to thank Councilmember Curtis Jones Jr. and all of City Council for creating this office just over a year ago. It is making a difference in helping Philadelphia to become safer. Councilmember Jones, I believe the Office of Public Safety is practicing intergovernmental collaboration exactly as your blueprint for a safer Philadelphia called for. You helped lay the roadmap, and we thank you. You heard the numbers already. Our homicides and shootings are down significantly in Philadelphia compared with a year ago, and they're declining more sharply here than in other big cities. But no one is exhaling or shouting "Mission accomplished" around here. Every homicide, every incident of violence is a loss for Philadelphia and a stain on our city's soul. Someone's son or father, daughter or mother, family member or friend, they are not statistics, they are human beings. And I will never rest until every family and individual in every neighborhood feels safe in their home and walking the streets of their community. We have much more work to do, and our police department, under the leadership of the greatest police commissioner in the nation, is more than up for the job. What else are you doing with public safety? We're embracing technology to improve our performance. The police department will move forward with a new forensics lab to assist the force with forensics investigations to help solve crime. Now, I got a firsthand look at how good our department is at forensic science during its painstaking investigation following the plane crash in northeast Philadelphia. Dr. Michael Garvey, our police department's director of forensic science, thank you for your service during this difficult investigation. We're investing. Thank you, Doc. Thank you. Thank you. We're investing in forensic sciences now to get you and the department more support. Dr. Garvey, we want you to know that our FY '26 through FY '30 plan, we are excited about it. It includes an additional $67 million for a new forensics lab and related costs. It's money well-spent to help us solve crime and to keep Philadelphia safer. We listened to you. I am also proud to publicly announce that the new lab will be located in West Philadelphia at 4101 Market Street. This will mark a giant step forward in forensics technology and crime-solving ability for our police department. And Doc, as you can see, we've been listening, listening, listening. We're also making progress, you should know, at recruiting, training, and hiring new police officers, too. Last year, 369 officers went through our police academy and joined the force. That is a significant increase from previous years, when only 201 officers joined the department. I'm also very proud to report that every police officer on the streets of Philadelphia will be outfitted with a body-worn camera by the end of this year, 2025. Yes. But that's not all. We're moving towards installing dash cam cameras in every police patrol car, too. That's critical. It's a critical tool that's used by the Pennsylvania State Police. We know that these investments protect our officers and the public, and I've always made it clear. I fully support every police officer who's on the front lines protecting and serving Philadelphians so long as they do so without any misuse or abuse of their constitutional authority. We support those who protect and serve. That is important for me to mention, Philadelphia, because I've often been criticized for being too pro-police. I don't agree. Philadelphians want to be safe and feel safe, and they deserve that basic human right, and I am unapologetic about supporting our police department. I have one more thing to say about our police department. We all hear about the sacrifices that our police officers make to be on the front lines protecting Philadelphians. It's one thing to hear about those sacrifices, it's another thing to live them. Last June, Police Officer Jamie Roman was on patrol in Kensington when he made a routine car stop. The stop turned deadly, and when a suspect shot Officer Roman, he was gravely wounded. Officer Roman clung to life before succumbing to his wounds in September. He gave the last true measure of devotion to our city. His widow, Jasmine Hernandez, is here with us today. Please, let us all rise to honor Officer Roman's ultimate sacrifice for Philadelphia. Jasmine, we will be here for you and your family. It's a tragic, tragically tough time. We thank you. Now, we also deserve public safety on our roadways and streets, so we'll start talking about Vision Zero. This time last year, I signed an executive order recommitting the city of Philadelphia to the goal of reaching zero traffic deaths. In alignment with the Vision Zero Task Force, my administration has moved to advance safety projects across the city with a focus on every mile of the High Injury Network where the majority of fatal and serious injury crashes occur. The speed cameras on Roosevelt Boulevard, one of the most dangerous roads in the nation, have saved over 50 lives. Meanwhile, Councilmember Isaiah Thomas, who has been a leader on this issue, is pressing for more red light cameras that will help to keep us safe. Thank you, Councilmember Isaiah Thomas, for your work. This public safety work matters, and I also want to give a special thanks to State Representative Ed Nielsen and our delegation in Harrisburg. This program is permanent and allowing us to expand to five more quarters. Yes, five more quarters, five more. Since then, and working closely with this body, including Councilmember Jeffrey Young, who chairs the Streets Committee, we're installing cameras on North Broad Street and PA 13, two more major roadways on the Highway Injury Network. However, we know far more needs to get done and will get done to finally eliminate all traffic fatalities in our city. This is why our proposed budget and plan includes major investments for a slate of Vision Zero projects. We're committing $5 million for Vision Zero in FY '26 and $30 million in capital investments over six years for speed cushions, line striping, and other traffic safety measures. But this isn't even close to the whole story. Why? Because we've secured and put to work millions of dollars, millions more from the state and federal governments. All of this will help us reach our goal. Every Philadelphian deserves to travel safely throughout our city and return home safe and unharmed. It doesn't matter where you live or work, your age, race, or ethnicity, income, or how you choose to travel. You deserve to be safe traveling on our streets. Now, one more thing that I have to mention, because people talk to me about this more than any other issue as it relates to travel in the city of Philadelphia. I am proud to report that once the Martin Luther King Bridge behind the Art Museum is completed, that Martin Luther King Drive will fully reopen, and you'll be able to drive through straight to the Parkway. Then that's right, right? If you live in northwest Philadelphia or in west Philadelphia, you know how valuable that route is to get downtown, so we are really, really excited. They're saying that it'll be done by September. Streets Commissioner Kristin Del Rossi, I know you're on it, and we are grateful. Give that another round of applause, please. Now, we'll turn to SEPTA. Public transportation is critical to sustainable, resilient neighborhoods, so let's talk about SEPTA for a moment. SEPTA is facing its own set of difficult fiscal challenges. That's why this budget and five-year plan, it includes $716 million in operating support to SEPTA over five years and a $76 million capital match over the to SEPTA over five years, and a $76 million capital match over the capital program. Philadelphia, this is important, don't let anyone tell you that we're not contributing our fair share to help SEPTA while we await the Commonwealth support to put the system on solid ground. We are, and we will continue to support mass transit. Public transportation, it is absolutely vital for our city's future, and we hear you, Councilmember Jamie Gaultier, mass transit in SEPTA matters. Clean and green FY26. As with public safety, there's no other issue I hear about more from residents than clean and green, and they tell me they can see and feel a difference, but we're just getting started. First, Director Carlton Williams and our departments are going to partner with nonprofits, community groups, and philanthropy to implement a new 10-point greening plan. We're talking about neighborhood actions here, like tree planting, vacant lot cleaning and greening, improving our parks, supporting community gardens, and much more. Councilmember Kendra Brooks, we know how important community gardens are, and we'll lift them up through clean and green. In addition, that's why my administration strategized and drafted the priority bid legislation for the land bank and asked you to introduce it because of your work. Your partnership is invaluable, Councilmember Brooks, and we will address the greening and ownership of vacant lots. Please give Green Space a round of applause. At the same time, a new anti-litter task force is going to coordinate efforts across government to enforce litter and blight violations while we target with increased fines and hundreds of surveillance cameras the illegal dumping that plagues so many neighborhoods. We're also going to be removing graffiti from highway passes and hotspots in our neighborhoods, and we'll invest $2.4 million over three years to redirect graffiti artists' energy through powerful programs run by Neuro Arts to display their talent for all to enjoy. Why? Because we can't forget that this is what many thousands of people will see when they visit our city in 2026. A first impression matters, and we're going to make a good one. We're also investing, and this is important, $4.2 million in planters to be installed along neighborhood commercial quarters. These will beautify our streets while helping to improve traffic safety. If they can work in Center City and Chestnut Hill, then we deserve them all over the city. As for the programs we started last year, the One Philly Citywide Cleaning Program, twice-weekly trash collection, and residential cleaning crews by council district, none of this is going away. Now, the game plan going forward is to expand them and make them more effective. Twice-a-week trash collection in Center City and South Philly now, Mr. President, and we'll bring it next to North Philly this year. We see you, Councilmembers Young and Senator Street. Housing, housing, housing. Last month, I was thrilled to formally launch our housing initiative by signing an executive order, creating the Housing Opportunities Made Easy Initiative, or HOME for short. My promise is this, 30,000 units of housing created or preserved while I serve as your mayor. Now, to accelerate the planning process, the executive order I sign set several important steps into motion. First, some 25 city departments and offices are charged to make housing one of their top priorities. They have 30 days to come up with recommendations, to streamline processes, cut red tape, and make legislative and regulatory changes that will help spur the faster production and restoration of housing without, without sacrificing health and safety. Councilmember Cindy Bass, we'll need your expertise on zoning issues as we work together on housing. At the same time, and this is important, we're engaging an advisory group and dozens of external stakeholders. You can only get big work done around a big table, so I'm talking about developers and CDCs, partners like Philadelphia Works, PHDC, PHFA, and the Philadelphia Housing Authority, and key players in the industry like the BIA, GBCA, and the Building and Construction Trades, and carpenters. All of these folks will be helping to shape our housing plan. Now, I know you may be wondering, how much is this going to cost, or where's the actual housing plan? I am proud to announce one part of the funding strategy today. I am also pleased to reveal that, for the first time in the history of our city, we will have a special session on housing hosted by my friend and our legislative leader, Council President Kenyatta Johnson, in this council on March the 24th. March the 24th, that's the day, D-Day for housing. That's when we'll share all of the details of our proposed housing plan. This is going to be an historic, unprecedented investment for Philadelphians. Council President Johnson, in our meetings and when we talk, I have long said that this plan, housing preservation and the building of new, will be one of our Maynard moments, referencing the late Atlanta mayor, Maynard Jackson, who created real tangible and ongoing economic opportunities for Atlantans. To get started with the first part of the funding strategy, I want you to know that over the course of my five-year plan, this administration will issue $800 million in bonds for our housing plan. Yes, 800 million. And not only that, we will begin by issuing 400 million of those bonds in FY26, and we plan on spending that money as quickly as possible. I want shovels in the ground, and I want houses rehabbed and restored. So let me be clear, we started this work on day one, and we will not spend years in planning mode. This cannot wait. If you know anything about me, you know I understand the urgency in our communities. We're here to take action. Philadelphians need more housing, and they need it now. More housing now. I want Philadelphians, renters, and homeowners in the best possible housing until they can attain the ownership or the quality that they desire. And I want more Philadelphians to become homeowners, if that is what they choose. This also means that we will not, and let me just say it again, this also means that we will not, in any way, shape, or form, pit the have-nots against those who have just a little bit. Chairman Harris, this is about ensuring Philadelphians across income levels and across the city have a safe, secure, and affordable place to live, and I won't play politics on this. We won't pit the have-nots against those who have just a little bit. We won't do it, not in the Parker administration. We won't do it. I'm beyond excited to work with this council to get this done, and I look forward to laying out our full plan in the special session on housing on March 24th. But while we're talking about housing, you should know that we are going to eliminate the construction impact tax. We cannot incentivize the building of new housing with this levy, so we will be removing the construction tax in our efforts to create more housing here in the city of Philadelphia. Education for FY26. We are proud, and as proud as we are of our efforts to improve the quality of our educational systems during the first year of the Parker administration, we know how much more work remains to be done. Senator Hughes, I was heartened to see Governor Shapiro propose millions more for teacher stipends to tackle the dire teacher shortage in the Commonwealth. I was a secondary English teacher, trained at Lincoln University, the first historically black degree-granting institution of higher learning in the nation. I had to say it, Ryan Borah, I couldn't help it. And I know what a stipend would have meant to me when I was doing my student teaching at Coatesville High School. This is why I am proud to note that the city is making another millet shift in the real estate transfer tax in FY30 to increase funding for public education by another $12 million per year to be specifically earmarked for teacher salaries. Our teachers, our teachers deserve to earn a living wage, and this is part of our ongoing commitment to our teachers as we pull on every lever, from stronger recruitment to workforce housing, to make Philadelphia the best place in the country to work in a classroom. Arthur Steinberg, we hope that you are proud. We look forward to working with you, the PFT, and the school district to get this achieved. Dr. Watlington, we hear you. I'm also proud to announce that we are expanding our Extended Day and Extended Year program of before and after-school educational enrichment opportunities by 15 more schools, 10 district-operated and five charter schools. This will bring our Extended Day and Extended Year initiative to a total of 40 schools serving thousands of children and their families. Study after study shows that these programs matter greatly when it comes to children's educational development, and we're doing what we said that we would do. I want to thank Chief Deputy Mayor Vanessa Garrett-Harley and Chief Education Officer Dr. Deborah Carrera for all of their work here, and over the course of this, none of this progress would be possible without the close working partnership that we have with the best school superintendent in the country, Dr. Tony Watlington. Councilmember Anthony Phillips, I know that this program and value you and I share and support together. I'm happy to note that one parent whose child is thriving because of Extended Day, Extended Year is here with us today. Lindsay Russell is the mother of Sidney, who is nine years old and attends Gampris Elementary School. Sidney is benefiting from Extended Day and Extended Year, and her mom wanted to be here today with us. Thank you, Lindsay. Thank you. One more young person to lift up this morning, and I'm excited about her. I want us all to welcome Janine Gaskins. She's a sixth grader at Edmonds School, another one of our Extended Day and Extended Year schools. Now listen, you got to hear about her. Listen to what she just achieved. She recently won first place in the One Philly Black History Month Oratorical Showcase that was held at City Hall. Janine is here today with her father, Donovan Gaskins, and her principal, Wendy Sharp. Janine, I too won that oratorical contest in City Hall when I was younger. We want to say congratulations, and we're so proud of you. Now on to something extremely important. Fair, multi-year contracts for our municipal workforce. As Philadelphia readies itself for the world in 2026, and as we focus on 30,000 housing units through our Home Initiative, it is well worth pausing to remind ourselves of exactly who does all of the work for the residents of the city of Philadelphia. The dedicated municipal workforce that rises to every occasion, that's who our city employees are. Whether it's the Philadelphia police on the front lines, or our firefighters and emergency responders running into harm's way, or the hard-working individuals who pick up the trash every day and keep our streets and sewers clean, or every social worker, librarian, housing employee, or prison correctional officer who shows up every day to serve the people of Philadelphia, or the thousands of other workers in other departments, our workforce makes me proud and humbled to serve as their mayor. It's important for us to know that city workers are our people, not assets, and we will treat them with the respect and the dignity that they deserve. Councilmember Jimmy Harady, Chair of Council's Committee on Labor, I know that you support this sentiment and believe what I'm talking about. We must lift up our municipal workers. See you, April. So let's just come out and say what many are thinking today. If we can find the money for tax investments and job growth, then surely we can find the money to give our hard-working municipal workers the fair, multi-year contract agreements that they deserve. On today, I am proud to stand before you, council colleagues, and I am proud to report that we have $550 million in the Labor Reserve Funds in this proposed five-year plan. It's an historic and an unprecedented figure. I am committed, under the leadership of our Chief Deputy Mayor Sincere Harris and her team of labor negotiators, to reach fair and fiscally responsible, multi-year agreements with all four of our municipal unions this year. Listen, with all that's going on in the country right now with government workers, our One Philly philosophy has never been more important. Roosevelt Poplar of Lodge Five of the Fraternal Order of Police, Mike Bresnan of Local 22 of the Philadelphia Firefighters and Paramedics Union, Greg Bullware of District Council 33 of ASME, and April Jaguetz of District Council 47 of ASME. I want you to know that we will continue working together to find common ground and get to yes on our multi-year agreements for our city's workforce that pay a fair wage with a health and pension benefit that you can be proud of while maintaining our city's fiscal stability. Presidents Poplar, Bresnan, Bullware, and Jaguetz, and all of the hard-working men and women represented by ASME, the FOP, Local 22, please stand if you're here in the chambers. Please stand, the leadership. I wanted to be clear about our priorities so that we could make it plain. Economic opportunity. Creating economic opportunity is central to the Parker administration in so many ways. Through our innovative City College for Municipal Employment, we are working in partnership with Community College, the School District of Philadelphia, and others to train Philadelphians for careers in city government. We're talking about good-paying city jobs with health benefits and pensions that will mean brighter economic futures. We are upskilling existing city workers too, training them to advance on their career paths. I am super excited to announce that this spring, and please listen to me closely, 32 high school seniors will receive CCME training that will give them the opportunity for city employment with Fleet Services, the Water Department, and public property. And we will continue to work And we will continue to work with other departments on growing quality opportunities for direct pipelines from our high schools into city employment. So that's right, from the School District of Philadelphia to city employment, that's the kind of pipeline the Parker administration is building for our young people, and we are very excited about it. Now, one of our CCME students is Alina Chandy, who's enrolled in the Computer Support Specialist Program at Community College of Philadelphia, CCME. Alina hopes and plans to work for the city of Philadelphia while supporting herself and her family. Please welcome Alina here with us today. Alina, you are the future that we are fighting for in Philadelphia. Dr. Guy Generals, CCP, Pat Clancy of Philadelphia Works, and of course, our terrific Superintendent, Dr. Watlington, thank you for collaborating with us on CCME. You can learn more Philadelphia about CCME and start your pathway to a good job with the city of Philadelphia. All you have to do is check it out at www.filla.gov/CCME. And to our city team who make this possible every day, Chief Administrative Officer Camille Douchesse, CCME Executive Director Carl DeFries, and Chief Human Resources Officer Candy Jones, thank you, thank you, thank you. Please give them a huge round of applause. Y'all stood it up, and I'm grateful. More on economic opportunity for all. I signed the PHL Open for Business Executive Order last spring, and our Commerce Department, led by Director Alba Martinez, is working to make it faster, easier, and less costly to do business in Philadelphia. You all know that Commerce just announced a new $5 million Small Business Catalyst Fund to provide what Della would call "love capital," patient capital, to businesses early in their growth journey, especially those from historically under-invested neighborhoods. I want to thank you, Alba, and Commerce, for getting the job done. Thank you, Alba Martinez. Wellness for FY26. Let's talk about the new wellness ecosystem that we're building under the Parker administration and what it means, not only for Kensington, but for our entire city. Before I say another word, it is very important to me that I personally thank a group of public officials who are working every day to improve the quality of life and public safety for the people of Kensington. I speak, of course, of none other than the Kensington Caucus, Councilmember Ketsi Lazada, Councilmember Mark Squiller, Councilmember Mike Driscoll, and Councilmember Jimmy Harity. Thank you for everything that you are doing to help to restore the community of Kensington. You should know that I recently started ours in Kensington, and I held a well-attended community stakeholder meeting, and I will continue engaging with the people. I want to thank you for your support, and you have not been moved on standing firm in delivering for the people of Kensington, and for that, we are grateful. Please give them a round of applause. Since day one of my administration, we have worked shoulder to shoulder with the residents of Kensington to end this opioid-driven humanitarian crisis once and for all. So first, we assembled the most experienced people in our city's healthcare system to learn what was working and what wasn't, and how we could work together to create a new ecosystem of wellness care for people struggling with substance use addiction, mental and behavioral health challenges, and homelessness. It had never been done before, but we assembled that network of experts, we listened, and we took action. We put $100 million in capital investments, the current FY25 budget. Thank you to City Council for helping us to begin building out that network and for the facilities that we needed to provide wellness care. I also want to thank our city solicitor, Renee Garcia, and her dynamic team of lawyers for their relentless work to secure tens of millions of dollars in opioid settlement funds that's reinforcing so much of our wellness work. Now, there were some who said that it couldn't be done, that it was too much, too fast. Where would the facility be located? Where was the plan? We did not have time to wait. We are in the middle of a humanitarian crisis, and we acted with urgency, focus, and a plan. Under the leadership of Managing Director Adam Teal, Capital Programs Director Apana Palantino, and a host of city agencies, and with the tremendous work of the Philadelphia Building Trades and other unions, we gutted and rehabilitated an existing city facility in northeast Philadelphia in 88 days, record time, and we opened the Riverview Wellness Village in January. Riverview has a 336-bed capacity, and I think some of our providers are here, Amerike Godendia and the Black Doctors Consortium, and it is serving people from across Philadelphia right now. Please give our providers a huge round of applause. Folks, we believe that what we are doing with our wellness model at Riverview can set the standard for how we treat the homeless and unhoused throughout our city. I want to thank Dale Construction and the Building Trades for working with the Partner Administration on developing a proof-of-concept plan as we continue on this journey to address housing for those who are homeless and unhoused in our city. There is nothing we cannot do when we work together, Philadelphia. This is just the beginning, and we will continue building out the Riverview site as I promised we would during FY26. This additional building, you all heard us describe it, that is planned, it will add hundreds of additional beds, which can be adapted to meet the ecosystem's evolving needs. We will invest another $216 million over the next five-year plan to support all of our wellness operating costs. Riverview provides not just food and shelter, but medical care, behavioral health care, job training, and a host of other services. I'm with you, Councilmember Nina Ahmad, in wanting every Philadelphian to have access to health care, including the most vulnerable. This is how we demonstrate our compassion, care, and love for the most vulnerable people in the city of Philadelphia. In a little over a year, America will be celebrating its 250th anniversary. And I assure you, Philadelphia, the birthplace of democracy, is ready to welcome the world in 2026. We will engage every corner of Philadelphia with meaningful investments, economic opportunity, and a spirit of celebration across every neighborhood. At the same time, we'll ensure that the nation's birthplace and first-world heritage city takes center stage as we host a slate of major events that will elevate Philadelphia on the world stage. The big events, you know, they begin this year with the 2025 FIFA Cup, World Cup this summer, followed by Homecoming 250, honoring our veterans and celebrating the founding of the United States Navy and the Marine Corps, founded right here in Philadelphia. Next year is the 2026 FIFA World Cup, MLB All-Star Week, and America 250 celebrations that'll remind the world where this democracy started. So as of last month, the Parker administration, in partnership with Council President Johnson and this council, has committed more than $30 million for partner and event preparations, along with nearly $28 million new investments for public safety to date. So with the mid-year transfer, along with the funding proposed in this FY26 budget, that will bring our total investment in 2026 to over $100 million. This means community events and programming, investments in our commercial quarters, and cleaning and beautifying Philadelphia citywide. This is important. When we clean up areas along Interstate 95 and I-76, these are the areas that guests from all over the country and the world will see first as they arrive in Philadelphia. Sometimes I think some people forget that preparing for 2026 means that we must get our own house in order, and that's what we must do. We're also investing in our transportation infrastructure with the Philadelphia International Airport as our global gateway and Septa as the arteries to move these many hundreds of thousands of people around the city and the region. Now, for the record, the airport alone, and no wonder I haven't read this anywhere, the airport alone has been putting to use $500 million for capital projects to manage spikes in traveler volume and to ensure a top-class guest experience. Atif Sahid, we are counting on you and the airport exerts to make this happen. Thank you so very much. And we're also investing in both our world-renowned arts and cultural institutions, as well as the local treasures that people will discover as they explore our city. Val Gay, I'm so proud we have you on our team, and we need you. This will be an exciting year, and I hope y'all are ready. I know that Michael Numis, our Director of 2026, and Giselle Jones, our great city representative and Director of Special Events, they are ready. Please give Michael Numis and Giselle Jones a round of applause. Now, on to tax investments. At the beginning of my remarks, I spoke of the city's fiscal health, and our fiscal responsibility today will help free up more money tomorrow for us to invest in services for our residents. I also said that when it comes to economic opportunity for all, we have done well, but that we need to be laser-focused on creating jobs for all Philadelphians. The only way to create greater access to opportunity for every Philadelphian is to grow the economic pie, to attract and grow businesses that will create jobs that pay families sustaining wages. But doing this requires that we finally address a tax structure that's hindered growth and stunted the job creation that we so desperately need. Now, I know this isn't a new challenge, and it's not an easy one, so I'm grateful to Council President Kenyatta Johnson for his wisdom and approach to this issue carefully in collaboration with my administration. This is also why we made no changes to tax rates last year, and we caught a whole lot of heat for making that decision, too. Instead, we focused with this council on making deep historic investments in city services, $2 billion worth, making our neighborhoods safer and cleaner as an important inducement to businesses to locate here and grow. In the meantime, the Tax Reform Commission reconvened by this council, studied pathways we could take together. Thank you to co-chairs Richard Vague and Matt Stitt and all of the commission members for their service, and to our friends in the African-American Chamber, Hispanic Chamber, Asian Chamber, Independent Business Alliance, and the Greater Philadelphia Chamber of Commerce. For our part, I directed my team to move forward with these guiding principles. First, the changes we make should be significant and unprecedented in scope. Big opportunities warrant big changes from the status quo. Second, we must be fiscally responsible. Nothing is more important than our city's fiscal health. And third, we should take advantage of the fact that finally, Philadelphia's pension fund will soon be fully funded, dramatically reducing costs that have saddled us for decades. This last point is extremely critical. When the pension fund reaches full funding status in fiscal year 2033, pension costs will decrease by more than $430 million per year. This creates an opportunity to set Philadelphia on a different course, one of steady growth and creation of jobs that sustain families and neighborhoods. If we work together, there is nothing we cannot accomplish for Philadelphia. It is time to reform our business tax structure now, right now. Because Philadelphia is an outlier in how we tax businesses. The business income and receipts tax targets both gross receipts and net income. That means both the revenue a business is generating for itself and its profits. Now, Philadelphia, if you've been to my budget briefings and town hall meetings, you know, I want you to just think about your own paycheck in Philadelphia and put this in perspective. Right now, every Philadelphian pays taxes on the gross amount you earn, the gross amount, the total you make. Fair enough, Social Security, Medicare, and other things, that's fair, but here, if you were a business in this city, we're taxing the whole amount you earn and your net, what you have left after paying your bills and daily expenses. That's like a double tax. And our administration, quite frankly, is finally going to address it in partnership with Council President Johnson and this council. We intend to reduce the net income portion of BERT by more than half to 2.8% within seven years of the pension fund reaching 100% funded status in FY2023. I know, not tax investments, not sexy, y'all. Over the same time period, we will eliminate the gross receipts portion of the tax entirely. In the immediate future, and while we face greater uncertainty with our federal funding, we will decrease the net income portion of BERT from 5.81% in FY25 to 5.5% in FY30. Now, with that said, an existing exclusion of the first $100,000 in gross receipts is going away, not because this administration is taking it away, like you may have read. It's not going away because we're taking it away. It's going away because of legal challenges to its constitutionally, and, Mr. President, I have to digress. When I was a member of this legislative body, I would never introduce a piece of legislation that wasn't approved by the Law Department, that they said that they could defend wholeheartedly for us, because I would always be afraid that some decision that we made could have a negative economic impact on our city, and this is affirmation of why the Law Department improving and working through legislation is so important. Now, this is unfortunate, because this exclusion that you just heard me reference, it saved thousands of neighborhood-based businesses from even having to file a BERT return with the city. But we are not going to turn our backs on these businesses. The Commerce Department is ready to move forward with the new Jump Start Business Program with $30 million a year in this five-year plan that can help impacted businesses with technical assistance and grants. And I have to give credit to the Tax Reform Commission for their signal that jump-starting businesses and jobs is our for their signal that jump-starting businesses and jobs is our overarching goal. Now, as for the wage tax, successive administrations have made small but consistent reductions. This should continue too, and we'll be restarting reductions in FY26. Our plan reduces the wage tax for Philadelphia residents down to 3.7% and for non-residents to 3.39% in FY2030. Now, while tax investments are never exciting, Philadelphia, I want you to know that this is really a big deal. In fact, no mayor and city council have stood together to reduce both sides of the BERT and the wage tax at the same time in 17 years. Thank you for your leadership, Mr. President, in 17 years. These $212 million in tax reform investments are historic and unprecedented. And I'm proud to stand behind them and I hope that you are too. Now, listen, this is a part we have to get to. Because even before I could get in the building, the day I started getting some messages from people saying, "This is not enough." So, Mr. President, I want to state for the record that I know we're going to have some naysayers, but this is what we can afford to do. And I shall not be moved on this delicate balance of enacting business tax reform while protecting the fiscal stability as a city. We will not. This proposal will spur businesses to grow and new ones to locate here, allowing our residents more and better opportunities to get a good-paying job. And that means that I hope out of this efforts to see more SCIU and Unite Here jobs being created for Philadelphians because we deserve every Philadelphian to earn a living wage, healthcare, and retirement security. Now, if you were to talk to businesses that are here today, if you asked them what they need, they will tell you more than anything, they need certainty. That's why we're codifying these historic reductions beyond this five-year plan. So don't just listen to what we say, business community, watch what we do. Philadelphia is open for business and we welcome you right now, our business community. Now, however business community and chambers, we have some expectations of you too. As I said during my chamber speech, we need the business community to help us lobby Harrisburg to enact a $15 minimum wage for our Commonwealth. And I want to say to the business community, if that doesn't appear to be possible in Harrisburg, then I want to publicly make an appeal to you on the day that you stay shoulder to shoulder with me, Council President Johnson, and members of this council in fighting for the Pennsylvania General Assembly to give Philadelphia, as the only city of the first class in the Commonwealth, the authority to enact our own $15 minimum wage. That's what you can do. Now, I'm sorry to start telling your age here, but I'm going to look and glance at you, Chairman Hughes. I want to give some direction because I only spent a couple of years up there. But when I say we need your help, we don't simply need a letter or a rally. What I learned from my few years in Harrisburg is that when the business community speaks up with the heavyweight tone that only the business community can use, both Democrats and Republicans, listen, Philadelphia, the time is now for a $15 minimum wage. Our people deserve it. Now, let's talk about East Market Street. After getting through the shock and awe of learning that our 76ers were going to stay in South Philadelphia, no one could deny that this was a good decision for our city. As a matter of fact, it's a win-win-win for our city, the Sixers, and Comcast. The new joint venture between Harris, Blitzer Sports and Entertainment and Comcast, it will lead to a state-of-the-art arena and that mixed-use development in South Philadelphia, building out that vision for the Battery Comcast. You should have never taken me to see your headquarters and to visit that Battery. I'm in love. In Philadelphia, we can build out a Battery that no one has ever seen before. And I'm excited about that potential. But closest to my heart, especially when I was a member of this body, is a venture, this venture, this joint venture, that will take Philadelphia one step closer to having its own WNBA team. That I'm excited about. And yes, this will help us to revitalize the historic Market Street East Quarter. I welcome Comcast to this partnership and am so grateful that they are here. Councilmember Squiller, you know that this is why, right now, we're investing in a planning study to carefully determine our course going forward. And within the next month, I will formally establish the Market East Revitalization Task Force, chaired by Jerry Sweeney. Jerry could not be with us here on today. He's got a business to run, but he sends his regards to everyone and he is all-in on this assignment. Please give Jerry Sweeney a thank you round of applause. Thank you, Jerry. You should know that, yes, we'll include representatives from Chinatown and the rest of Center City. It will also include those who own land and property along the quarter, as well as the Sixers and Comcast, who remain committed to revitalizing Market East. Now, as for the new arena in South Philly, we can now leverage all of the work already being done, especially on how to ensure economic opportunity for local residents and businesses to make sure that this project benefits the city as a whole. I want to be very clear, nothing about our intent and our goals changes. A project of this magnitude has to have a positive benefit for the entire city. And these efforts will lay out the foundation for that next exciting round of work. I want you to know that I feel really good about the fact that a woman who, I don't know anybody who works harder than her or who's smarter than her, my Chief of Staff Tiffany Thurman, I thank you and am so grateful that you will lead this effort. Tiffany manages all things related to our efforts and I'm grateful, Tiffany, for your help. Now, here's what everybody's been waiting for. It's nice to hear you talk about all those investments, but now you're going to have to tell us how you're going to pay for it. And that's important because I've never been one who could tell you how to spend some money, but not how we're going to raise the money to pay for what we want. The first answer, the biggest answer, is from the dramatic savings we're going to see from lower pension payments once the pension fund reaches 100% funding. But we're also going to make adjustments in this proposed budget and five-year plan to make ends meet. First, a small increase to the Realty Transfer Tax will generate $173 million over the next five years. When we need to build or preserve 30,000 units of housing, this revenue will help us to get there. And don't forget, and this is when, Philadelphia, we should celebrate ourselves because we have what not a whole lot of other cities have. We have Philly First Home, our program that provides closing costs and down payment assistance. And I'm not sure how many people paid attention to the Wells Fargo Neighborhood Lift Program to also help with housing costs and down payments. This plan also proposes, this is the second phase of this, this plan proposes increasing the parking rate in Center City from $3 to $4 per hour. This would be, this would be, and I didn't know this until we were going through these rates, this would be the first parking rate increase since 2014 and will provide revenue to both the school district and the city's general fund. And lastly, we'll increase housing trust fund portion of the document recording fee by $3 and use the revenue to help cover, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson, our tangled title work as a part of our housing plan. Tangled title work, important for housing in the city of Philadelphia. I don't take lightly any proposal or raise or to raise a fee or a tax. We don't take any of it lightly. And we took no such actions during our first year in office. But I also know that we did big things, bold things. And by working together and thinking creatively and acting decisively, these new revenues and the savings from a healthy pension fund will make the big things possible. From housing and fair contracts to tax reform and wellness, these investments, in the long run, will make our city the safest, cleanest, and greenest big city in America with access to economic opportunity for all. Nothing about our vision, goals, and/or objectives have changed. We remain laser-focused on our mission to deliver a government that people can see, touch, and feel. And I don't know about you, but no matter where I am in the city of Philadelphia, people will tell me that they feel that something different is happening in neighborhoods across the city. And I'm glad we don't promise perfection, but just to do the best that we can. And I'm happy they know that we are making good on our promises. In closing, I want you to know that my name is Sherrell L. Parker and I am the 100th mayor and first woman to lead Philadelphia in 341 years. I proposed this One Philly 2.0 budget to the City Council of Philadelphia with historic investments in public safety, clean and green education, housing, fair contracts for city workers, and tax investment and job growth. And I do wholeheartedly approve this message. Today is just the beginning of this process. I'm coming soon to a neighborhood near you for a budget briefing or housing town hall meeting. Let's work together with collaboration, diligence, and purpose towards its passage and implementation for Philadelphia with a shared goal, a safer, cleaner, and greener city with economic opportunity for all. Together, I pray and believe, everybody put your ones in the air for me right now. Oh, that's not nice. Everybody put your ones in the air. Let me hear you all say, "One Philly."
One Philly.
A united city.
A united city.
There were courtness. You have to do it louder. Repeat after me, "One Philly."
One Philly.
A united city.
A united city.
Let's go, Philly. Let's go. Let's go, Philly. Let's go.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to take a moment to thank all of the support staff and all of the Sergeant of Arms and all of the great people who made today a huge success. And of course, Council President, thank you for your leadership today and making today's move. And with that being said, I make a motion that council stands adjourned until Thursday, March 20, 2025 at 10:00 a.m.
It has been moved and properly signed that this council stand adjourned to Thursday, March 20, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you very much, and Happy St. Patty's Day.